Uh, Lilia Novello and Tasha Reese on their final meeting as members of the city clerk's office. And asked that they lead us in the pledge of allegiance in this final meeting.
John, after.
Oh, Mr. Kennedy, after the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice.
Thank you both for that. Now you, you can check that off your bucket list. And I, I wish you both and your families well, and congratulations. You've both served the city for thirty-three years, and that's a tremendous legacy for you and for your family. And I thank you and congratulate you both.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Kennedy, did you have a question?
I was just going to add my words with your words in reference to those two outstanding employees that all of the members of the city council, this council and previous councils have relied on for accurate information. So again, I applaud these particular employees who are retiring, and we wish them, as we've already said, the best. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you to the young folks who are retiring.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mayor.
Mr. Hampton, the mayor's calling on you.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear him. Oh, he's at the podium now. Oh, just very briefly, and also my congratulations to those that are retiring. Natasha, congratulations. Really proud of you, and happy for you and your next journey. As you all may know, that, um, we've, we've had some, some, um, very sad openings of our meetings as of late, and I just wanted to bring to our attention, um, that, as this is a more of a celebratory, um, mentioning, that Bryce Young, Pasadena resident, um, just won the Heisman Trophy over the past weekend. And I just wanted to congratulate him and his family, and his family for raising such a wonderful young man on and off the field. And so with our connection to college sports, I just thought it would be, and I believe, and I also believe this is the first Heisman Trophy recipient that is a resident born and raised in Pasadena. And so I, I wanted to congratulate him and his family for job well done. And I look forward to seeing his continued success throughout his career.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. That's an appropriate recognition, and we all congratulate Bryce and his family for such a tremendous achievement. Next, we have a couple of ceremonial matters, and I'd like to, to recognize the long service of the following employees on behalf of residents of Pasadena and the city and the full city council. Beginning with Angela Jackson, who started out in the permit department as permit services specialist. Angela is responsible for addressing related issues on residential commercial properties within the city of Pasadena, and utilizes her knowledge to successfully issue building permits. And today, we celebrate thirty-five years of service to the city of Pasadena. Thank you, Angela. If you'll make your way up. Next, I'd like to call up Glenn Penarubia, who started in the city in nineteen eighty-six as a part-time city services worker in the city clerk's office. Was hired full-time two months later, and then joined the public works department as an engineering aide. For the last nine years, he's been working on water main designs and effectively assisted PWP's engineering section by contributing his expertise, devotion, and care for the city's water infrastructure. Glenn? Next, I'd like to call Lola Osborne, someone who's familiar to all of us. Lola joined the city of Pasadena's Planning and Community Development Department in nineteen eighty-six, and currently serves as the deputy director of Parks and Rec and Community Services. Lola leads by engagement, is deeply committed to public service, and has sincere respect for the community, and provides meaningful opportunities for engagement in the public process. And we celebrate Lola's contributions, many contributions to the city here today.
Thank you. Quickly, I just wanted to thank my family for their encouragement. Thirty-five years is a long time, and lots of night meetings, but I also wanted to thank a few individuals who got me to where I am. Don Noller, Don Moran, Joe Russ, Tom Wilkins, Denver Miller, Richard Brechner, Mario Leonard, and Steve Mermel. Wanted to make sure I acknowledged them. Thank you.
Next person I would like to call up is Robin Evans. And Robin started the career, the career with, her career with the Pasadena, city of Pasadena in nineteen eighty-one, and has faithfully served with the Pasadena Police Department for forty years. She is a vital link between citizens and their requests for law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services. She truly is an unseen person's responder, and thank you for your forty years of service to the city of Pasadena. Thank you, Robin. Next is another forty-year celebration, and this is Brian Sands, who started out in nineteen eighty-one in the Department of Library and Information Services as a typist clerk. Then served library one, librarian, librarian three, and library support services, in the library support services division, and is now deputy chief information officer. Brian, congratulations on forty great years of service to people of Pasadena. Next, we have Bernadette Glover, another thirty-five-year service student. Beginning as a librarian in one in the public services division of the Pasadena Public Library. Bernadette has served thirty-five years for people of Pasadena. She has been an essential member of the collection development team at the Pasadena Public Library with operational responsibilities that include systems, why purchasing, collection, management, and analysis. Congratulations, Bernadette, on thirty-five years of service. Next, we have another thirty-five-year staff, Pasadena staffer, Steve Thurston. Steve, if you'll come on up. Steve started out as a police cadet and served in various capacities in the Pasadena Police Department over his thirty-five years, including patrol as field training officer, and most recently as a pilot on a police helicopter. And Steve is on Zoom. Steve? There? Oh, there he is. You can turn your camera on, Steve. Say hello. Can you hear us? Well, he was there. I saw. Oh, there he is.
Okay, there you are.
Thank you for your many years of service to Pasadena.
Thank you, sir.
We have a great certificate here that will be sure gets into your heads.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Also joining us on Zoom is Tanya Francini, another thirty-five-year of service we're recognizing. In nineteen eighty-six, Tanya began her career with the city's central library page. She was promoted to library assistant and served in a variety of branches throughout her thirty-five years. She truly enjoys working with the public, serving the community, and so is a, has a value, a value library staff. And her enthusiasm motivates everyone who surrounds her. Tanya? You're here on Zoom.
Yeah, yes, I'm here. Thanks very much, Mayor Gordo.
Thank you, and like the person before you, we have a beautiful certificate that we will be sure gets to you.
Thanks very much.
Next, also on Zoom is Christine Reader, who also started in nineteen eighty-six and began her tenure with the Pasadena Public Library as librarian, and currently serves as senior librarian at the Central Library. Throughout the years, Christine has built rapport, shepherded the many staff with whom she has worked with, encouraged their professional growth, and developed, and fostered, and maintained numerous community partnerships and relationships that benefit the city and our great library. Christine, congratulations, thirty-five years of service. We think I see Christine there?
Thank you very much, Mayor Gordon.
Thank you. And we have a beautiful certificate that will find its way to you.
Thank you very much.
And I think that completes our presentations. We have a couple of others that Benatino Galde, who's celebrating thirty-five years but could not be with us today, in the public works department. Nora Jolly, who also worked in public works for thirty-five years, serving the city of Pasadena. And Larry Stewart from Public Works, who also celebrates thirty-five years of service. Unfortunately, he could not be with us today, but we certainly congratulate and thank him for their service. Thank you. Okay, next. Oh, I'm sorry. We have members of the council who wish to say a few words. Ms. Williams? And Ms... Oh, okay, Mr. Masuda. Go ahead, Mr. Masuda, and Mr. Wilson.
Mayor, I didn't, I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, okay. Mr. Wilson?
No, neither. I was
Okay, I think Previous items. I think the, the council in its entirety compliments and thanks all of the people that we recognized this evening. Mr. Madison?
Mayor, I came on a moment or two late, and I just wanted to echo them the appreciation and gratitude for Lilia and Todd. They've been full employees of the city, and I'm personally really grateful to both of them. I don't know the meaning
Steve, you're cutting
I know they're gonna, they're gonna really have a great time in their next chapter. Yeah, I've been
You're, you're a little choppy, Steve. I don't know if it's your connection.
That also, Mayor, I've been coming in and out. I don't know if you all are experiencing that, maybe it's on hand. Let me log off.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But thank you. We, we got the gist of your comments, Mr. Madison. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thanks.
So, well, before we move on to public comments for matters not on the agenda, I'd like to request that the speakers stick to the minute and a half timeframe. We have quite a few speakers, and the council still has to conduct its business. And so, in, out of respect for those who tune in to contribute to matters on our council agenda, I would ask that we reduce the time to a minute and a half. Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yeah, in the sake of ceremonials, I know a number of us participated today in the retirement celebration and the holiday gatherings for Pasadena Water Empower. So I want to acknowledge the tremendous service of general manager Gritcher Mbawa, and assistant general manager Eric Klinkner, who will be leaving us at the end of this year as well.
Congratulations to both, and both have a long and distinct career with the city of Pasadena. Okay, and distinguished career. So, minute and a half, and how many cards do we have?
Mayor? I'm having technical difficulties. Can someone pull me out of the general public and put me into the room?
We'll remove Mr. Hampton from the general population. Put him in a special holding place.
Mayor, we have thirty-three.
Okay, thirty-three. So again, thirty-three commenters for matters not on the agenda, and so minute and a half.
I'm gonna start by commenting the following, stating the following. Public comment will be limited to a total of twenty minutes at the beginning of the meeting, and will continue at the conclusion of the meeting, if necessary. Comments are limited to one point five minutes for each speaker, as noted by the mayor, and reasonable under the circumstances. The city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda, except that members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising public testimony rights. Pursuant to the city council's adopted meeting policies, members of the public shall direct comments to the body as a whole, and not to staff, individual members of the body, or the public. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks about members of the body's staff or the public, or who shall become boisterous, or threatening, or personally abusive of the body, staff, or members of the public shall be asked by the mayor to cease and desist such activity, and may be requested or required to leave the meeting in the event the behavior continues to disrupt the meeting proceedings. In addition, I would like to apologize, apologize now for mispronouncing anybody's names. And with that, let's call our first speaker. We're gonna start off with public speaker Joe Valenzuela, Bert Newton, and then Cynthia Kirby. Joe?
Mr. Valenzuela?
Howdy. My name is Joe Valenzuela. I've lived in Pasadena for twenty years, and I'm currently a resident of District Two. Like many longtime residents, I've been concerned to see the cost of housing climb beyond all reason in my time here. I recognize and I share the desire to preserve the character appeal of the neighborhoods that first brought me and my family to Pasadena. However, I'm distressed that so many people today find the life that I, we enjoyed out of reach because of the cost of housing. So let's say I'm urging the council to rezone religious land to allow by right affordable housing. Res zoning church land for by right development will allow religious institutions to serve their parishioners and your constituents by building affordable housing with the necessary number of units to make it financially feasible. Ten churches have already expressed interest in having affordable housing on their land, including All Saints Church, which has been an advocate for the marginalized for over a hundred years. An increase in the amount of affordable housing will take steps to reverse the years of racial and class inequity that low-density zoning has resulted in. I know that rezoning is a topic that invites spirited
Sorry, Joe, you have thirty seconds.
in our city, and must balance priorities of sustainability, livability, and aesthetic concern. Allowing by right affordable housing on church land, however, is a common sense compromise that hopefully we can all agree to. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bert. I'm sorry, thank you, Joe. Next, we have Bert Newton, followed by Cynthia Kirby, followed by Hiram Cormier Jr. Bert, Bert, you have a minute and a half, please.
Okay, yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. What I like to address this evening is the need for more funding for affordable housing. Bill Wong said in the Ed Tech Committee, I think it was last week, that the city has been so good about approving affordable housing, which is great, thank you very much, that we have, we, we've been so good about it that we have run out of project-based vouchers, which are necessary for the lower end of affordable housing. In fact, it's a barrier to taking advantage of Project Home Key, because those interim housing units will eventually become permanent supportive housing for which we need project-based vouchers. So we need more sources of funding, and what I request is that the, the city staff and the council, Ed Tech Committee, who, you know, whoever can do this, to work on it and study what are the sources that could be, could be tapped. We are a very wealthy city. I don't think we just have to wait for the state and federal government, although we can push the state, I think, more easily to provide more funding.
Bert, thirty seconds.
Yeah, but we are a wealthy city ourselves, so things like a transfer tax or fee, somebody told me to call it a fee, but in my research, I think it has to be a tax, and that would have to go on the, on the ballot for the election, but the city has, you know, the city council has put things on the ballot before, and the, and the residents could decide. But we need urgently more sources of affordable housing, and I don't think there's any reason that our wealthy city couldn't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cynthia Kirby, followed by Hiram Cormier Jr. and Pastor Mario Sette Morales. Cynthia, you have a minute and a half.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Cynthia Kirby. I'm a member of First Baptist Church of Pasadena, and I am, I hold a seat on the Board of Directors of Union Station Homeless Services, and I'm the chair of the Live Expertise Advisory Panel. And I am just speaking tonight on asking the council to please approve the rezoning of church lands for affordable housing. As a local church member, and as someone who experienced ten years of homelessness, many of those years within the confines of the city of Pasadena. When I first came to my church, I, I think the first thing that I wanted was to be a caretaker of the church, because I was homeless at the time. Our church participated in the family promise program in San Gabriel Valley, and
Thirty seconds, Cynthia. Thank you.
that came to stay at our church. Families that were experiencing homelessness at the time, and I just thought that this was a really beautiful model. I think that church land should be rezoned to allow for affordable housing. This probably doesn't even affect my own church, but we already have many churches in the city that really would like to take advantage of this model. So thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you. Hiram Cormier Jr., followed by Pastor Mario Sette Morales. Hiram, you have a minute and a half.
Yeah. So again, I'm calling to tell you that you need to fire the cops who killed as you claimed. There really is no reason why those cops should still be on the force. Fuck Edwin D. McGwenden. There is no reason why that kid, or that pig, should be on the force at all. There's no reason why you should be on the streets to just terrorize people and harass people and keep doing the same thing over and over. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, because y'all don't act. As far as the settlement goes, yeah, there are seven and a half million reasons why the pig should be fired. As one of my comrades says, there's also seven and a half million reasons why y'all are spineless, gutless, and ain't done nothing at all to help us. You give more protection to the cops than you do to your own people, even though you say you care. You know, you just heard from about, what, three or four people? You hear about people every week talking about health, talking about healthcare, talking about
Thirty seconds, sir.
whatever it is, and all you do is just sit here, watch people suffer, struggle, and die. Do something about it, so we could stop with this shit, because that mean it's just fucking ridiculous. As far as guns and all the shit going on, you know, that gun ring, you know, if you are so concerned about the violence in the community, stop selling the gun. You know what I'm saying? Stop calling the police and actually do something else to change this, because you're just making shit in a big ass cycle of violence, and it doesn't help.
Sir, your time is up.
So, hey, man, whatever. Fire the cops.
Thank you. Pastor Mario Sette Morales, followed by Mayor Bill Brand, who's not checked in yet, who's not checked in yet, and then followed by Alan Shea. Pastor Mario, Mario Sette Morales, you have a minute and a half? He's coming.
There he is. Mr. Morales?
Sirs.
You need to unmute, sir.
Star six, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Victor Gordo and City Council, fellow citizens present. My name is Pastor Mario Sette Morales. I've been part of the community in Pasadena, community life since the late eighties as a student and then graduate during the nineties from Fuller Theological Seminary to work among those in society who are affected by unaffordable housing. Then in two thousand sixteen, worked with hospice in South Pasadena, and presently also working with the projects of Norfolk Oaks with Making Housing and Community Happen. I first want to thank the council for the one thousand plus affordable housing units in the pipeline. We all agree that affordable housing will help raise healthy children who will contribute to our society when they become adults. Second, I support the proposal of the rezoned church land for affordable housing in Pasadena. The rezoning of underutilized church land will provide sites required
Thirty seconds, sir.
across the city, affordable housing developments need to have forty to fifty units by financial feasible. Most churches' land in Pasadena is no-son corrected, so they needed to be doomed by right. Finally, I want to thank you for your commitment to housing justice in our community. Thank you so much, and happy holidays.
Next.
Mayor Bill Brand has not checked in, so we'll move on to Alan Shea, followed by Kat Ross. Alan, you have a minute and a half.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Gordo and City Council members. As you're well aware, each week we call in and ask that you release the video from La Penaresca Learning Center showing where the officers brought the guns into the crime scene on the east side of North Raymond in the Anthony McLean's shooting. We've also asked that you fire them. This will continue until you do fire them. City council members, our new manager, city manager Cynthia Kurtz. This is gonna be an ongoing issue creating in a, a city which is now appearing to be infamous, especially in the wake of the latest shooting now with Mr. Hall, Devin Hall, twenty-four-year-old black man who was shot last, three weeks ago, and the information was just released
Sir, you have thirty seconds.
by, by Pasadena now as to his name, and the video has not been released. The video needs to be released, otherwise it's gonna show the propensity of corruption within the police department. There is no reason why they cannot release the video to show how this gentleman was shot in, in this circumstance. Everything else we'll deal with afterwards, but
Sir, your time is up.
post, you should post the video. Thank you.
Next is Kat Ross, followed by Jane Ward. Kat, you have a minute and a half.
Hi, I'm just interested in the officer-involved shooting policy. I know that you said a couple months ago I know that you said a couple months ago that it was going to come up on the agenda in January. Great, I'm wondering if the item that's coming up is a discussion or if there's actually going to be any action. I'm actually interested in a change in the policy, a recommendation that the officer-involved shooting policy have a limit on the administrative review period from an unlimited amount of time to nine months, which is the amount of time that Chief Perez said is the maximum amount of time it would take for his officers to finish an investigation. So I'm wondering how to get that information from you, and if someone could please respond, that would be super wonderful.
Ma'am, you have thirty seconds.
Officer-involved shooting policy, really want to see some change on that. Been asking for months now, can't seem to get any response. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Theodore, no, I'm sorry, Jane Ward, followed by Theodore Smith, followed by Heavenly Hughes. Jane Ward, you have 1.5 minutes, please proceed.
Hi, I'm calling on behalf of Showing Up for Racial Justice, Alcindana Pasadena to ask three questions that were raised by different members of our organization who, you know, are either at work or parenting, and they can't be present with us today. The first question we have is why should the city of Pasadena spend more money on body worn cameras when its police often don't turn them on, as was the case with Chris Blue and Anthony McLean's murder? And when the police don't share the footage with the public? So for instance, we don't understand why we haven't seen the footage of Pasadena PD's shooting of Devin Edward Hall. Our second question we received was why can't we trust the city of Pasadena to arrest black men alive? So white school shooters and armed extremists get apprehended alive, but God forbid a black man does something wrong in the city of Pasadena because he's gonna lose his life. If you think the body worn camera footage is so important in producing police accountability
Thirty seconds, Jane.
of Devin Edward Hall's death, so we can assess whether the police did everything they could to avoid killing this man? And our third question is which one of our City Council members has the courage to ask that Anthony McLean's murder be placed on the agenda? We've watched you do this time and time again with other issues. We don't know if you're being intimidated, or you think you don't have a second, or what's going on, but we're left to imagine the worst because we know you could place this on the agenda.
Your time is up, Jane.
And you won't.
Thank you. Theodore Smith, followed by Heavenly Hughes. Theodore, you have 1.5 minutes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Theodore Smith. I am the Assistant City Prosecutor for the city of Pasadena, and I recently was elected to the Pasadena Management Association's Board, speaking here tonight as an individual. But I want you to take a look at me and hope that you see also the Pasadena Management Association and all of its members. We are in all sixteen city departments. We are the largest union in the city, and we provide value and service to this city and make sure that your agenda is put forth out into the city. I wanted to let you know that in recently, The Washington Post has indicated that inflation in this city is at six, inflation period is at 6.8%. We buy food, we buy gas. Further, we work for this city. We are not compensated for any overtime that we have provided for this city.
Sir, you have thirty seconds.
Many of us cannot work from home as well. Again, we are in every department. We provide value to this city. I'm hoping, Mr. Mayor and Council, you take a look and find out exactly who PMA is and not listen to anybody else, but find out for yourself directly what value we offer to this city and continue to offer to this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Heavenly Hughes, followed by Victor Hodgson, who has not checked in, followed by Charles Jacobson, who's also not checked in. Heavenly, you have a minute and a half, please proceed.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please, again.
Heavenly Hughes, co-founder of My Tribe Rise. We bring an asset and serve Pasadena, Alcindana, and neighboring cities. Greetings to the community of Pasadena, greetings to the public comment callers of Pasadena and neighboring cities. To everyone who works, plays, visits, and resides in Pasadena, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and may you have a healthy and happy New Year. Today, my public comments are about what matters. What matters are the survival insecurities the city needs to address, such as housing and food insecurity. What matters is the fact that black men are being murdered, violently beat, in the streets of Pasadena by the Pasadena Police. What matters is gun violence must be stopped, including the gun violence of the police. Say his name, Anthony McLean. Say his name, Anthony McLean. Fire the police officers involved with the cover-up and murder of Anthony McLean. Hold them responsible and accountable. Mayor Victor Gordo, it is time for the city to rebuild the confidence of the community. Do you believe, do you want the community to believe in the framework of the Pasadena public safety? As of today, corruption, collusion, deception, murder, and lack of public safety rest on the feet of the City Council and the City Manager. We demand
Heavenly, your time is up.
We demand justice, justice is an equality for all.
Thank you. Victor Hodgson is next, who's not checked in. Charles Jacobson also is not checked in, so we'll proceed with Pastor Corwin Manning, followed by Jason R. Pastor Corwin Manning, you have one minute and a half, thank you.
Yes, I'm here this evening to point out an interesting and unnerving microaggression directed towards those of us who are vested in this city enough to endure these meetings. I'm sure you all understand what a microaggression is, and if you go back and review the last City Council meeting as well as previous meetings and today's meeting, you'll find that the city clerk or whoever keeps the time consistently interrupts every person giving public comments when they're close to their time being up. While I understand the thought behind this practice, this microaggression is extremely distracting, unfair, and disingenuous. I'm asking the council to immediately stop doing this. I know it's possible, because at the last council meeting, there was only one and only one person who was not interrupted until his time expired. Can you guess who it was? Let me help you. It was Mr. Yanis, the former Pasadena Police Officers Association Board Member. Do you mean to tell me that out of all the speakers at the beginning and the end of the meeting, those who waited till the end, Mr. Yanis, former PPOA Board Member, was the only speaker allowed to share his comments completely and maintain his train of thought without being told, "You have thirty seconds left"? Such micro partiality on the part of the city clerk, along with caring and catching, it shows the disconnect between council and community that continues to divide us. The City Council Agenda webpage says that we have three minutes each, unless the mayor determines that we don't.
Pastor, your time is up.
So you've consistently reduced our time, two minutes, 1:30, when you interrupt us
Sir, your time is up. We got to be fair to all the other public speakers.
Mr. Yanis didn't have to worry about it, and we shouldn't either.
Okay, thank you very much. The next speaker is Jason R., followed by Julia R. Jason, you have a minute and a half.
All right, so with this being the last meeting of 2021, I want to remind this council that while you hold power, the true power resides with the people, and if people want an end to terror, harm, and the murderous ways of this police department, your craver and refusal to seek out any type of justice in the name of Anthony McLean is very telling. We see you for what you are, anti-black, spineless emissaries of white supremacy, the city custodians for the killer pigs of Pasadena. You will forever be linked to the scandalous, sick swine who murdered Anthony McLean. That's your legacy. How do you sleep at night? Oh, I know, with pillows packed with blood money from the Pasadena Police Officers Association, each one of you needs to answer, are you with the pigs or are you with the people? Not you, Felicia, we already know your answer. So each week, we expose y'all for your complicity in the cover-up of Anthony McLean's murder, and each week, your silence on it gets louder. Shame on you. You are cowards who can't speak up and take action on behalf of a black man shot in the back by a pig. So let's get something off the bucket list of everyone who fights for justice
Sir, you have thirty seconds.
firing the officers who murdered Anthony McLean. His children deserve that, his family deserves that, his community deserves that, and we deserve that.
Thank you. Julia R., followed by Michael Williams. Julia, you have a minute and a half.
Hi, my name is Julia. I am a teacher, and I had a student this, two weeks ago, who lost a father. And I don't know if any of you have lost a parent or if you have lost a child, but no parent or no child should ever lose their father, especially at that age. It is so horrific that Anthony McLean was taken from his family. It is, it is so upsetting that the, even just like the mere image of someone being shot in the back with no accountability. It is unbelievable the amount of lies and falsities that have been told about this case and perpetrated by members of this council. Fire the officers who killed Anthony McLean. We need more video evidence for this new killing that happened within the Pasadena Police Department. You have the opportunity to do something with this. When I ask my
Thirty seconds.
They want to do with their lives. They say, they say that they want to do good, and you have the opportunity here to do this. How, how can you just throw it away? You are workers for the people. It is unbelievable that you can completely ignore your duties. Do the mere, just base element of your job and work and listen to your community members. We call in every single week, and we're gonna continue to do so.
Julia, your time is up. Thank you. Michael Williams will be the last speaker for this initial first twenty minutes. Michael, please proceed, you have a minute and a half, thank you.
So this council now has the ability to speak on this topic, right? There's no reason why you cannot fire these officers. The case has been settled. So there's no legal reason why you can't speak out and talk about this. There's no reason why you can't fire these officers. You won't be admitting any guilt within our liability on the part of the city. So fire them. The only reason why you're not is the proof of what other people have called in here and said is that you all are beholden and trapped by the police unions, and you know this. And that's what's gonna lead to us having to remove folks. That's what's gonna have to lead to us having to get people out of seats. And I don't want to do that. I don't want to have to do that. I want to have this be done because it's the right thing to do. But that's what it seems like it's gonna have to take, because
Michael, you have thirty seconds.
y'all are not even speaking about Anthony McLean. You're not even saying that you support the ideas of Anthony McLean getting justice and his family getting justice. And there's no reason why you can't talk about this. There's no reason why you can't fire these officers, except for the fact that you just won't, because you don't want to lose any money from police unions or whoever else is backing you who doesn't want to see this happen. You know the community wants to see this.
Sir, your time is up.
The mayor says, you know the community wants these officers off the force.
Thank you. We have, Mayor Bill Brand has joined us. He will be our last speaker. Mayor Bill Brand, you have a minute and a half, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good evening, Council members. I'm Bill Brand, Mayor of Redondo Beach, Councilmember for eight years, Mayor for Ford Discovery, elected for another four. Been very concerned about the state bills coming down, posing zoning and other building regulations on us. I'm sure you guys are all familiar with many of them, particularly SB nine, which requires cities to ministerially approve as many as four to eight units on a single-family lot. So I'm calling because we're considering legal action as a charter city. You guys are a charter city. I'd very much like for you guys to consider joining us. Clock's ticking. I would hope you would agendize, probably in close session, and have a discussion. Our city attorney's been talking to your city attorney, and I just wanted to chime in and tell you how important it is to us and a couple other cities. It would be great to have Pasadena. You guys are out front, big, and yeah, very important. So I'd also like to mention an initiative, OurNeighborhoodVoices.com, which amends the Constitution to make zoning
Sir, you have thirty seconds.
community affairs. With that, I'd encourage you to, this is a website. It would put planning and zoning back where it belongs at the local level and put an end to these state housing bills that are really just market rate housing in the way of us getting affordable housing. So anyway, thanks, you guys. I hope you'll take that under consideration, and thanks for letting me on, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That completes the initial twenty minutes for public comment. The following speakers are still in the queue for public comment at the conclusion of the meeting. I'm going to call out the names, Victor Hodgson, Charles Jacobson, Jasmine Rizadula, Adriana Papista, Eddie Portillo, Daniel Kudos, Jose Rivera, Jose Muñoz, Kyle Johnson, Gary Peters, Simboah Wright, Dwayne Howard, Doral Walker, Karen Kay, Sarah Boland, Yoel Carter, Ben Vargas, Troy, Brittany Pollock, Sarah, and Carolyn Galoney will be called. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just have a quick question? Could we get an update on the SB nine lawsuit and what the options are for the city, for the city attorney, either in a memo or on an agenda item? Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the consent calendar. And before we take a motion on the consent calendar, let me just read into the record an item that relates to item number nine, and the law requires the following statement be made. Prior to voting on item nine, as required by the Brown Act, prior to taking action on item nine regarding the city attorney's city prosecutor's compensation, this is to announce the recommendation that the city attorney receive an approximate 2% annual salary adjustment retroactive one year, a one-time 4% management incentive payment, and an annual city paid 5% contribution to deferred compensation. The city attorney's last payment adjustment was two years ago, November 2019, and she did not receive any cost of living adjustment during that time. The city attorney will continue making a 10% employee paid per pension contribution. With that, we can move on to the consent calendar. We do have public comment on items three, four, five, and six. So and it's on the same item, so why don't we take that public comment? It's one speaker on items three, four, five, and six. Three B, I'm sorry. Three B, four, five, and six.
Okay.
We'll prove at the appropriate time, Mayor.
Yes, one public comment. Yes.
Okay, the public speaker will be
Tasha will report on correspondence received, Ms. Clerk. And then we'll turn to Mr. Kennedy.
Okay. The city clerk's office received one letter stating opposition to appointing a CalPERS retiree as interim chief of police, stating that this is not the best option for the city, and advocated for Deputy Chief Cheryl Moody to be considered for interim chief of police. The correspondence has been distributed to City Council, posted online, and made part of the record for this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Kennedy?
I actually had one quick question on item one, Mayor.
Okay, let's turn to Mr. Kennedy first, who has a comment, then we'll turn to Vice Mayor Wilson.
Well, first of all, I'd like to move at the appropriate time to consent the calendar. However, with the power that we must provide the interim city manager, we, the council, have the right, prior to providing that power, to let the interim city manager know that a precedent has been set when there is a vacancy created and there is a deputy in the police department, that that person be afforded an opportunity to serve in an interim capacity. That is what we did when Police Chief Sanchez resigned, and we elevated the current chief temporarily to an acting or interim capacity. Anything else would be Anything else would be an insult to the community and would not be supportive of the process that this council or previous councils have supported. So I want to be clear for the record, so there is no ambiguity, that I believe that the deputy chief, the current deputy chief deserves to be appointed the interim police chief. Having said that, once we take this action, it'll be squarely in the Baileyway wheelhouse of the current interim city manager to make that decision. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Kennedy, for clarification of your comments, are you saying that the chief's, the previous chief Sanchez was raised up the ranks?
No, I'm saying that when the previous chief Sanchez resigned, we placed in that position the deputy chief, who is the current chief, John Perez. So the current chief of the Pasadena Police Department has given notice that in January he is resigning or retiring. I think retiring is the appropriate way to reflect what he shared with us, his positions that he has held for a number of years and done so admirably. If that is the case, I want to be crystal clear. The deputy chief of police, Cheryl Moody, deserves to be elevated on an interim capacity to a police chief in the city of Pasadena because there is a precedent, there's a fairness issue, there's an equity issue, and anything less than that would be an insult, not to the black community, but the whole community.
Well, I just want to, for clarification, because during your comments, you said that we appointed the chief. We didn't, at least I wasn't here for that meeting because I didn't hire any police chiefs. And that was Steve Mermell's decision to make John Perez the police chief instead of going out, which he probably should have. And that's neither here nor there. It was ultimately the city manager's decision to make that hire, just as he has hired people in the past. So I just want to make it clear for anyone who's thinking that we have the ability to hire or fire a police chief. We, at least I, had no say in that decision whatsoever.
Nor did I, nor did I.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
My point is the interim, the interim position, I'm suggesting that to do anything less than we did for the current police chief would be what I've already articulated. You are correct.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Did not.
I mean, I think it's, I think that's a fair, those comments are fair. But at the end of the day, it's the city manager's decision. For me, I personally think that the officer who shot Anthony McLean in the back twice should be fired. And I will continue to say that. It's not a problem because he did not follow policies within our own policy. And that's the reason why I've asked for a discussion, for us to have this discussion about the policy. I don't make that ultimate decision.
Let's not stray too far from
That's my opinion. Thanks. No, I'm just saying, I'm stating my opinion. I'm, when I say me, I'm always talking about me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Councilmember Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm calling in as well, so as to be able, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm calling in as well because I'm having some internet problems. But I, I agree that it would be inappropriate for the council to address that issue in the manner that's been suggested. I think the charter actually prohibits us from being involved in those decisions in the way that was described. And I could also see a city manager might well determine that if someone is an applicant for the position on a permanent basis, that the city manager may wish to have someone as an interim that is not an applicant. I don't know if the individual that Councilmember Kennedy mentioned is intends to apply or not. That would be a matter for her and her family and and then ultimately for the city manager to decide. So I intend to support the consent calendar as drafted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Vice Mayor Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. And certainly I support Steve's assessment about making sure we're complying with limitations in our authority as a charter city. As Councilmember Hampton said, you know, you would like to have the officers fired, but that's just not the purview of the council. That is part of the city manager's leadership structure, as is the selection of interim department heads and permanent department heads. So, but my comment really was on item one, which is the one at the right time I would ask, want to ask questions. So the question is pretty straightforward on that item. Just to the extent that there was only one responsive bid issued, how do we ensure that we are good stewards of the public purse without having any competitive bids on something that's worth a half million bucks?
A point of clarification, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Masuda's next. What's your
A point of clarification
Go ahead.
...precedent?
Go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
I just want to be clear so no one is unsure about what I did say. And I want to be clear about the record. The interim city manager does not have the authority to make permanent appointments related to department heads, period. Secondly, as it relates to my previous comments, all I'm suggesting is that we follow the precedent that was set. Not that I am in any way suggesting that the city council makes a decision that is within squarely the purview of the interim city manager. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I will, I will correct the record. The interim city manager, under our charter, does have the authority to make permanent appointments, but she's, I'll let her address that issue. But nothing prevents an interim city manager from making permanent appointments. I, I do think we should give
That was a part of her appointment.
I, I do think we should give maximum flexibility to the interim city manager in making appointments that will serve the city in the short term and long term. Ms. Kurtz?
But that's just not accurate. The point is that the city council determines that the current interim city manager would make no permanent appointment of a department head. If that is not true, correct it for the record.
That's, that is, that is a correction. That is a correction. She, she's chosen that route.
No, the city council chose that route.
All right, we'll, we'll look at it. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
I, I, I It is correct, excuse me, that I, I could make appointments. I told you that I did not believe I should and that I would not. It was not written into my contract. But I assure all of you that I think one of the most important things is for the city manager you choose to build their own team. I was just going to respond by saying I thank you for the comments. I would say that probably the most difficult appointment a city manager makes is the police chief because he's really the face of the community, known far better than the city manager in certainly any city I'm aware of. It's very important. And I should not and will not, I assure you, Mr. Kennedy, make an appointment on a permanent basis in any of the, the appointments that I have to make, but most certainly on the police chief. I think that is the one difference from the precedent that you were talking about. In those cases, it was a city manager that was, was testing someone, was seeing how they worked and putting them in the position. It was part of the recruitment process. And the next city manager may decide to do that. And, you know, people in the department that are interested in the chief of police position, I am simply asking for the flexibility tonight, that is the same for all three, making our charter consistent with PERS rules. I think it's very important that PERS not override what the voters have approved in the city. I've made no decision on the police chief. It is the last retirement of the three that I, departments I must look at. And so I have left it to last. I will talk to internal candidates. I will gauge their interest in the position. And I will bring you what I think is the very best recommendation possible for the city, for the department. And I, I thank you. If you pass this tonight, I thank you all for your confidence in me being able to do that.
Well, you'll make the appointment, not a recommendation. Yeah. So, Mr. Masuda, your hands up and then we can go to a public comment.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I too believe that our interim, interim city manager should make the decision for the interim police chief. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Masuda. We have one public comment on three, B, four, five, and six. Okay. So why don't we take up four, five, and six, three, the commenter?
Okay. We have two for multiple, for comments, public comments on multiple items on the agenda. So we're going to go ahead and call up Jasmine Richard Abdullah, who's speaking on item one and three. Jasmine, you have one and a half minutes to speak on consent calendar items. Please proceed.
Okay, I'm just, I want to add because you guys are talking about Cheryl Moody, which I had on my heart and my mind today. I feel like as a community member, you guys should start looking out of Pasadena, preferably if you can look out of this state and find someone else to come in because you need a new lens. We need a new perspective, a new vantage point. Cheryl Moody is, she has been here 30 years. And I, I know her from the streets when she used to be out there with Yokomoto, Alba Aguilar. Cheryl Moody is going to continue to do the same things that have been happening in the city, which is protect killer cops, protect the current policy. She doesn't see anything wrong with the current policy. So I'm asking you guys, can y'all look into getting another police chief from not, not from Pasadena, who has no, who has no ties to the current stakeholders, who has no ties to current bad apples and bad cops like Keith Gomez, who won't protect them? We're asking you guys to do what's best for the city, since the current city manager can
Thirty seconds, Jasmine.
...a full-time person, but she can hire an interim. So Ms. Kurtz, right now I'm asking you, can you look into other applicants? And John Kennedy, it, it won't, the whole community does not feel like you. The whole community does not want Cheryl Moody in there. And I'm part of that community, your district. And we don't want Cheryl Moody. So y'all need to do something else and find someone else.
Jasmine, your time is up. Thank you.
Oh, she's a woman. Oh, because she's black. No, we don't want her.
Thank you. Next is Anthony Munusos, who's going to speak on agenda item four, five, and six. Anthony, you have one and a half minutes. Please proceed.
Well, I, thank you very much. I, I had hoped to speak separately on these items because I had not prepared to speak for a minute and a half on three different items. So I'm going to speak just on item five, which is, just to remind us, as we sit in our warm, comfortable rooms, we must never forget the nearly 300 residents of our city are sleeping on the cold streets of our city. Our religious tradition calls on us to act. The prophet Isaiah said, "Share your food with the hungry and give shelter to the homeless." This is also the message of Jesus, who has birthed many of us, celebrate during these holidays. So I want to give kudos to the housing department and to all of the city for providing services and housing to our city's unhoused residents and low-income writers. We certainly support what is being recommended, the use of the $2 million in ARPA funds for vouchers, rental assistance, support services, and also hiring a project coordinator for the rental assistance program. However, while we should be grateful for the windfall from the federal government, much more is needed. Until more state or federal funds become available, our city should look for ways to strengthen our affordable housing fund. I feel we should consider charging a fee to investors who flip properties or landlords who leave their properties vacant. The need for affordable housing is urgent. Let's explore bold and creative solutions like tiny shelters or allowing congregations to have affordable housing built on their property. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you. That concludes public comment on multiple agenda items.
Okay. So there's a question, one, on number one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Bowles?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson. You had a question about item one. Although we received one bid, which was for $560,260, the engineers' independent estimate was about $600,000. So it did come below our estimate and we think it's a reasonable bid.
Thank you, Bow. I didn't see that detail provided in the staff report. So I guess in the future, if that, that's a helpful data point and I appreciate that and I'm comfortable with that.
We'll do that.
Okay, we, apparently we have, thank you, Mr. Bowles. We have three more speakers on consent calendar items.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and call for item number three. We have Pastor Kirwan Manning, followed by Heavenly Hughes, followed by Alan Shea. There's one and a half minutes, please. Pastor, I will not interrupt you until your one and a half minute is complete. Thank you.
Could you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. It's one and a half. Please proceed.
Wanted to make a comment about this whole matter of the appointment of a retiree. You know, as a pastor of this city for over 20 years, I've served and supported every Pasadena police chief, beginning with Chief Malekian all the way to Chief Perez. And I understand the gravity of this specific transition. But I believe that we don't need to pull a chief out of retirement. We don't need a resolution in order to make the right choice. If according to the proposed resolution, which states that the city manager wants to ensure community continuity in the operation and management of the Pasadena Police Department, then why would you choose to open this process up to a statewide search for a retiree? Especially when we have, I believe, for an interim chief, a capable and competent deputy chief with 30 years of experience in this community. And she is already aware of the challenges and concerns in our community. It doesn't make sense. I would hate to think that this may have been a farewell suggestion or recommendation from our former city manager or even a last-ditch effort from our outgoing chief of police to control or influence who takes the reins. It would be appropriate in any, in ordinary circumstances. However, our city and police department needs stability and seasoned leadership right through here with everything that's going on, from a global pandemic, a nationally reported officer-involved shooting, which left another African-American male, Anthony McLean, dead on our streets. This investigation is still active and ongoing with many twists. And we don't need to waste time and effort looking for a retiree who may not know the specifics
Sir, your time is up.
Please consider simply allowing our qualified, capable, and competent deputy chief step forward and lead
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. Heavenly Hughes, followed by Alan Shea. Heavenly, you have a minute and a half. Thank you.
I actually didn't realize, and so forgive me, that this, this was happening, this three B. We do not agree with a search of a statewide retiree, just as Pastor Manning just brought up. I asked Cheryl, Deputy Cheryl Moody, are you ready? If you're ready to be in this position, we support you and we look for you to stand by the side of right standing and accountability. We don't want you to put out the same statement that Chief Perez put out, that the law and policies are damaging to black and brown people because I know Deputy Moody is a black woman and would not want to implement a policy that's damaging to black people. So I appreciate even what Honorable John Kennedy brought up earlier, making clear how this procedure is going to happen. I thank you Cynthia Kurtz for making it clear that you will keep to your word, that you will not put in a person in that space for, for the chief, that you will wait until we get a city manager to put, to choose that relationship between the, the chief and the city manager, the community, and the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alan Shea, who's speaking on item three. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alan Shea, who's speaking on item 3, followed by Aaron Markowitz, who's speaking on item 6, however, he has not checked in. Alan Shea, you have a minute and a half. Please proceed.
Yes, once again, we're looking at issues concerning police accountability, police responsibility, and police discretion here. I would hope that our interim city manager, Ms. Cynthia Kurtz, utilize her best judgment to assure that our, that, I should say, Ms. Moody, retain the interim position to give the city a chance to heal, to fire those officers who killed Anthony McLean, and to also make sure that full transparency takes place, starting with the shooting of Devin Hall. These things are mandated here if you're going to, if you want to restore trust here and people to believe in this city. It's, right now, you're at a, the infamous of the city is getting ridiculous to where people are comparing it to lynching and-
Sir, 30 seconds.
Back in the 40s, back in the 40s and 50s, when the KKK was at its height, we don't want that in our city, but it takes our city leaders to change that. So, Ms. Kurtz, I certainly hope that you take this and run with it, along with Deputy Moody, to make sure during this interim period, we recover from the damage that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker of unconcerned calendar is Adriana Baptista on item 3. Thank you. Adriana, you have 1.5 minutes. Thank you.
Hello, I'd just like to share that in the last over, community police oversight meetings, Cheryl Moody talked in a number of times and challenged the independent police auditor on a number of recommendations that both he and OIR were in support of to improve Pasadena Police Department. I highly recommend that everyone involved, who is assessing her as a candidate, pay attention to what's happening in those meetings and how she is speaking on behalf of PPD, which I think is a very big disgrace to what people are demanding in this city to improve this police department. It's a disgrace to tear down these recommendations that have been paid for, have been cried for, have been begged for.
You have 30 seconds.
Are a low bar. We need a chief of police who's actually setting the standard higher than those recommendations, which are the very least that PPD could improve. So, I do not think that she's a great candidate. Alpha Jackie Lacy was a Black African-American woman who did not do anything to improve justice for those killed by police officers. So, all of you using that argument-
Your time is up, Adriana. Thank you.
We'll ask the clerk to report on correspondence related to the consent calendar, and then I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, for item 4, the city clerk's office received-
Okay.
Kennedy, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
For item 4, the city clerk's office received one letter expressing appreciation and support for the accessory dwelling unit loan pilot program, with the same organization submitting 150 letters advocating for rezoning religious property for affordable housing. The correspondence has been distributed to the city council, posted online, and made part of the record for this item. For item 5, the city clerk's office received one letter stating support for the proposed action and commending the city's housing department. This correspondence has been distributed to city council, posted online, and made part of the record. And for item 6, the city clerk's office received two letters providing comments and expressing support for the proposed action, but also advocating for increased funding to address the chronic problem of homelessness. And this correspondence has been distributed to city council, posted online, and made part of the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There's a motion, and is there a second? I think Mr. Kennedy made the motion. Is there a second? Yes. Mr. Masuda seconds the consent calendar. Sweet motion. Roll call.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
The motion passes, and this is to approve all consent items.
That brings us to item number 12, and this is a public hearing. And this is an amendment to the 2021 Annual Action Plan. This is a routine matter that comes before us for action, and I'll ask Bill Wong to join us. Do we need a, yeah, let's open the public hearing, then we can entertain a motion to close it and- Yeah, we've heard this often. I don't think we need a presentation. This is, this one's ingrained in us.
Okay. This is the time and place for the public hearing on substantial amendment to 2021, 2022 Annual Action Plan. On November 18, 2021, and December 2, 2021, the public hearing notice was published in the Pasadena Press and the Pasadena Journal. No correspondence was received by the city clerk's office regarding this item.
Thank you. So, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, so moved.
Moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by-
I'll second.
Ms. Rivas, roll call on closing the public hearing.
Okay. Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
And now, a motion on the merits, this is a matter that's appeared before us numerous times, and I'd entertain a motion to adopt staff recommendation.
So, moved?
Moved and seconded by Ms. Rivas, moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Rivas. Roll call.
Councilmember Hampton? Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
Motion unanimously approved.
Next, we go to recommendations from officers and departments, beginning with item 14. And this is the approval of the Water and Power Department 2022 Annual Update to the Wildfire Mitigation Plan. Madam City Manager?
Again, this is a, that, a report that by law comes to you each year. We do have a presentation, if you would be interested in hearing it, to see. There are some changes in this year's planning. And I will just emphasize that the Fire Department and the Department of Water and Power work closely together in putting together the changes, and both departments are in concurrence. This is a good, good plan for Pasadena to move forward as we move into the really heart of our fire season and have concerns about our hills, our trees, and any conflicts that may occur with our trees and overhead lines. So, would you like a presentation?
Sure. I think, you know, this is a matter that's come before us often and regularly. I think maybe just highlighting, if you can move the slides that highlight the changes in this year's plan, that would be helpful.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Sure. Thank you very much. So, this is a plan that we do every year. This is an update to the plan that you had approved last year. The plan outlines two particular areas which the staff is required to do further analysis on and perform some risk analysis, look at alternatives. And I'm going to request Marvin Moon, who's the Assistant General Manager for Power Distribution, to explain those changes. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bawa, for that. Yeah, this, this plan is basically annuals for the middle that we do to the state. It's a plan that every utility does called Wire from Fire Mitigation Plan. Its purpose is to minimize, of course, sources of ignition from utility assets, improve resiliency, and do, of course, be as effective as you can. Again, our fire areas looks like this. Our extreme fire area is the red zone up on the top. Our Tier 2, which is an elevated fire risk, is on the left side in the yellow or orange area. And the rest of the city is just called the higher fire risk area. The original plan was approved in 2019 by the city council. We did an update last year. This is our third approval of this plan. Completed projects for this year, we've done a lot of, we've changed out a number of wire spans to our covered wire, which is insulated from bear, or it used to be bear. We entered, this is a big one. We de-energized one of our primary lines that runs up Millard Canyon. This was a, if anything, that's the area that would have exposure. So, we turned off the high voltage line that's there. We replaced it with a low voltage, 120 to 40 volt conversion. So, it's very, very low risk now. We also did a lot of repairs and assessments in the Tier 2 area for this past year. So, in progress, we've done enhanced tree trimming for our tree areas and a lot of inspections in the Tier 2 area. We've also been doing a lot of assessments in our Tier 3 area, and I'll just show you real quick. This is some of the overhead areas that we've changed out. Our bare conductor to covered wire. This is the Millard Canyon job that we converted to low voltage. This is the tier zone area. We've analyzed and mitigated a number of our pole threats. So, now we're writing up the cues for work packages to reinforce some of our overhead constructions and change out additional conductors. In the lower right corner are some pictures of air wire versus covered wire. We have brought to the MSC committee a couple of times a discussion related to possibly undergrounding the two areas of town in our extreme fire area. This is the northwest one in the Floridita area. And it's kind of a debate whether we just go low voltage or do a full conversion. Similarly, on the east side, there's another area that we're discussing. Where we left it was the city council asked, MSC committee members asked us to evaluate the real risk between full conversion or just convert it to low voltage. So, just like everyone else, we put the plan together, and they have a template that we have to follow. So, we followed the template, and as was mentioned earlier, the Fire Department assisted us in the initial plan and this update. So, with that, we're requesting that the council approve our update for the state, and we'll continue our work.
Thank you. This is a matter that comes before us regularly for mitigating the impacts, potential impacts of high voltage and transmission lines throughout our city and the wildlife part of our city. Every utility does it, and pass for our hours opportunities come today. So, thank you for the presentation. Is there, are there any questions? I think the presentation is self-explanatory, but if there are questions now, it's time to ask them otherwise, or entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. This is on the merits. This is approving the update to the wildfire mitigation plan. It's been moved by Mr. Hampton, seconded by Vice Mayor Wilson. Roll call.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yeah.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
Motion unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you to the department. My colleagues, I apologize. I inadvertently skipped item 13. Oh, this is Bawa's last meeting of the city council, not just for the year, but his career. And so, we want to recognize that, Mr. Bawa, and thank you for your very complete and dedicated service to the people of Pasadena and to our utility. On behalf of the city council, I'd like to congratulate you and your family, and congratulate you.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like just to have a couple of brief comments about Mr. Bawa. Mayor?
We can't hear Bawa talking, I think.
Oh, okay.
Bawa wants to think.
Mayor, if I may, make some brief comments about Mr. Bawa.
I'm kidding. So, Mr. Kennedy has his hand.
Thank you. I would like to join the mayor in recognizing the long tenure of Gertrude and Bawa at our water and power plant. Oftentimes, cities may only have power, but may not have necessarily water or vice versa. So, we're unique in the city of Pasadena that we have a combined water and power department. And certainly, I believe Gertrude and Bawa and his team have done a phenomenal job dealing with some very complex issues that the community may be aware of, and certainly, the council is aware of. So, we wish Mr. Bawa well in his retirement. Go with the grace that you have given to this city as the general manager of the Department of Water and Power. Again, I support the mayor and my colleagues in simply saying, we wish you the very best to you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Hampton, followed by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Gertrude, I have to say that, you know, as I called you, and I want to reiterate our phone conversation, but, you know, when I heard that you were retiring, I was extremely saddened by that news. You have performed a tremendous job. You and all your, all your team members, Eric as well, performed a tremendous job for all of our residents. I always, you know, think about the departments in general, you know, like, all of our departments do great jobs. But, you know, it's one department thinking water and power that if everybody's power and water went off in the middle of the night, we would all be out of a job as city council members. So, I want to tell you that I am personally grateful, and I think it's something that we take for granted. You know, you go to your fountain, you know, you go to your fountain, you go to your faucet, and your water turns on. You hit that switch, and it turns on. And we have dedicated people in your department, because of your leadership, that are dedicated to their job, to ensuring that Pasadena have a reliable power as well as a very, very clean drinking source. So, Gertrude and I, I just have to say that I am grateful, once again, for your service, and I am praying the best for you and your new journey in life, and please stay in contact.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor, and I've had the honor of chairing Municipal Services Committee, which is the primary committee for dealing with our utilities. And that has been understaffed by Mr. Bawa. His thoughtful leadership in, you know, dealing with utilities, whether it's water or power, are very strategic in nature. And there are also operational needs when we have, you know, crises that need to deploy resources quickly. And that balance of thinking long-term and making sure that customer and resident needs are met day to day is a difficult one. And I think Gertrude and Bawa and his team have done an extraordinary job in balancing those competing priorities. And it's been a real pleasure to work with someone who's so astute and committed, and he leaves big shoes to be filled. And I personally thank Mr. Bawa for taking me under his wing and teaching me about the utility business. It's super interesting and certainly a, probably a underappreciated part of our city. So, Bawa, I wish you all the best, and it was fun to meet some of your family today at the party. And I know you'll have a great future outside of the city of Pasadena, but know you'll be missed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson. Mr. Masuda?
Thank you, Mayor, and Bawa, I too want to-
Thank you, Mayor, and Bawa, I too want to thank you for your outstanding leadership. The residents of Pasadena, especially my district, really trust you and we, and feel that you are so respected for how you conduct yourself. I want to thank you, and I think I thanked you before about speaking at my district meetings, and I, I appreciate the way you, you handle yourself. So thank you so much, and let's keep in touch. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Masuda. Thank you, Mr. Bawa, again, for your many years of dedicated service to the city. Thank you. Good luck to you and your family. Okay, returning to item thirteen, we have correspondence to report out. This is under old business, and this is the contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for five years. And the subject of this agenda item is police body worn camera. Madam City Clerk, if you'll report out on correspondence.
Thank you. The city clerk's office received one letter providing suggestions and urging the council to ensure good policies are in place to ensure body worn cameras live up to their potential as a tool for increased police transparency and accountability, which, and this letter has been distributed to city council and posted online and made part of the record.
We do have four public comments, but before we turn to public comments, I'll, yes, no, why don't we turn to, to the city manager for opening comments, and then we'll do a presentation and take a public comment.
We thank the council members who sent questions in, so we better define and clarify this report. A number of people offered ideas, and as we looked at answering the questions, the work done by the, the police department and the company itself, we realized that there was some confusion about exactly what was in the contract and what we were purchasing. So we have brought some additional information here. We had started with requests to extend a contract. And as we began to answer questions, we began to tell you about modulars that are available, things that were being tested, new things that would be possible with the cameras. And I think we got confusion, we saw it both in the questions we received from you all, but also from the media and the way they were reporting, that there was an understanding that some of those new techniques and new things that the cameras could do were in fact included in our contract. And they were not. It was an extension of the contract looking then to what could be included. But what we did at the council's request was we have brought forward information on what each of those additional, either modulars in some cases, or equipment that can be added to the cameras, what they would cost. We don't have tonight how long it would take to implement them. We would have to work on a schedule and bring that back to you. After we hear public comment, I'd like Deputy Chief Moody to speak to the questions, and then if you are interested in information about the cost of different, additional contract modulars, we can offer that. And if the council wants to direct us, that we should proceed on those. At the same time, we will put it in the contract extensions. So just, just wanted to really explain that there's more recommend, there's not more recommendations tonight, but there's more information that may cause you to ask us to not only extend the contract, but also look at some new techniques that we're not currently using.
Yeah.
One of clarification.
Hold on, Mr. Kennedy, we'll allow the city manager to complete the comment.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, point of clarification.
I just need to understand if there is an action item in thirteen. I thought there was an action item in thirteen.
There is.
Yes, we are still asking you to extend the contract, the contract that for the original cameras was, was due, and we, that is the real basis of what we're recommendation, our recommendation tonight, what we're asking the council to do. But you may want to add things to that, and we're ready to discuss that as well.
I'd like to, at the appropriate time, move staff's recommendation. However, as it relates to the add-on that the interim city manager has discussed, Mayor, I hope that those matters could come through public safety as one level of vetting before it comes to the full city council.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I, I, I think there is an opportunity here to improve upon the policy that we have in place. We'll hear a brief presentation of this matters come before us previously, but I, you know, the, I, I appreciated the report addressing the issues directly that have been raised. And I think there's an opportunity here to receive more public input from the police oversight commission on the body worn camera issue, to look at the issue of the two-minute buffering, to look at measuring the time based on assignment and role of an officer in the community. And also the issue of, yeah, the cameras turning, turning on, thank you, the cameras turning on when a weapon is unholstered. I think both, all, all of those issues are ripe for input from the police oversight commission that can then make a recommendation, as Mr. Kennedy suggests, to public safety for us to proceed. But I, I think the way forward that Ms. Kurtz has outlined is the appropriate approach to extend the contract and ask that the staff proceed with pursuing these other modules. And in the interim, go to the commission and back to public safety for a full recommendation. And then it will also require a, a budget amendment in, in the future. And so with that, let's turn to public comment.
We now have one, two, three, five public speaker cards. First one is Kat Ross, followed by Pastor Kirwan Manning, followed by Jasmine Richards Abdullah. Please note that you have one and one point five minutes to speak. Kat, please begin.
Thank you. I'm, I'm really hopeful that when contracts like these are put in place, the city council instructs the city manager to create policy that would require their use and would require their use just across the board. It's upsetting when people are killed in our community and the public is not given access to the body worn camera footage, and then more money is used for body worn cameras. It would make the public feel better about body worn cameras if they actually did their job. So instead of saying, don't have them at all, I'm saying, if you have them, let's have them work, and let's have them work well. It looked like in the report from the city that there's the.
Ross, you have thirty seconds.
Thank you. To two minutes, but there's also recall evidence for the last eighteen hours. That's pretty amazing. It'd be great if when there was an incident, the city could produce the last eighteen hours of active camera use, so we could really see as a public the full investigation.
Your time is up, Ms. Ross. Thank you. Next speaker is Pastor Kirwan Manning, followed by Jasmine Richards Abdullah. Pastor, you have one point five minutes. Please proceed. And he's gone. So now we have Jasmine Richards Abdullah, followed by Heavenly Hughes. Jasmine? You have a minute and a half. Please proceed.
I'm calling in. I hear you. I'm calling in to tell you guys, yes, approve these new body worn cameras, just based on, I did my research. And I like that when they're act, when as soon as a gun or taser is pulled, the body camera automatically activated, being that these cops are choosing not to turn on their body worn cameras when they're either age, they're shooting somebody, then when they, as soon as they pull out their gun, they're automatically activated, and they go into a database. That database is stored, but it's also, you can go into that database at will. And it's, it's easier to classify. So I feel like you guys need to approve these new body worn cameras. Okay? But don't keep putting all our money into bullshit. Approve these cameras, and let's, yeah, just approve these, motherfucker. Have a good day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heavenly Hughes, followed by Alan Shea. Heavenly, you have a minute and a half. Please proceed.
I heard the previous callers say new technology, but then I thought for sure, I just heard since your church said that this is not for new technology, that is actually to extend the contract that you already have and give more money towards these body cameras that are supposed to be able to bring accountability, responsibility, and transparency in the, in the incident of, which we are concerned about, officer involved shooting. Who are you all being transparent with? Because the body cam footage should be released raw, unedited, and for the community to see. And I say that because we have not seen the officer involved shooting body cameras in the incident of Devon Hall. So we ask that if these fundings are going to be extended to do what they are put in place to do, let them perform the framework that they are structured for transparency, accountability, and responsibility. Release the body cam footage of the incident that happened with the seventy-year-old man in Devon Hall on the east side of Pasadena. Release raw footage of all officer involved shootings.
Ms. Hughes, your time is up.
The police accountable in incidents like Anthony McLean.
Thank, thank you. The next speaker is Alan Shea, followed by Adriana Baptista. Alan Shea, you have one point five minutes. Please proceed.
Yes, I'm, I'm looking over this policy or this contract, and the thing that I find challenging here is it's, I think we need to reconcile a, a true policy so that the residents of Pasadena can understand how both the, the policy and the contract are in conjunction when these incidents come up. As one of the speakers just said, there has not been any information released on, on Mr. Hall's shooting. However, with Anthony McLean, we have to put pressure on the former mayor before that was released. These things should not be taking place in this form if our contract and our policies are disclosed to the residents to know exactly what's going on. That way, we wouldn't have to waste our time here at city council meeting demanding that things happen. They should be one in the same when they are laid out. If we're going to lay out this contract and pay this kind of money for body cams, let's put the policies out there that are clear, that are clear and concise, so when incidents happen, we are, everybody's on the same page with what the actions are going to be within the city to start to cure the, the crises we're experiencing here with the trust that we have lost regarding the shootings here in Pasadena. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Adriana Baptista. Adriana, you have a minute and a half. Please proceed.
Hello, I'm reading the questions submitted by councilmember Rivas on the attachment on this item, and it looks like the body cameras actually do not activate when a taser is removed from the holster, but they activate when it's armed, so when the safety switch is turned on. And that is, that seems like a beneficial idea. And however, the Axon Body Camera Three does not automatically activate when a firearm is removed from its holster, and it says this would require signal sidearm, which is an additional Axon product. So my question is, like, how, like, what would it look like to have that, the signal sidearm? And also, just to make.
You have thirty seconds.
Are updated so that, so that the officers are actually aware of, like, how to use these and what the difference is between the body cameras that they currently have and these, and to have the independent police auditor make recommendations to update the policies based on this new technology that they're receiving. And additionally, raised in the commission, the Oversight, Community Police Oversight Commission, recently, this, this issue did come up based on a previous recommendation.
Your time is up, Adriana. Thank you.
The policy regarding when a, documentation on when an officer uses a firearm, period. So this, I think is a really important issue that needs to continue to be tracked.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Baptista.
That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. I'll turn to the city manager. There, there is a question. I mean, all, all of these questions are important questions, and they should all be looked at very carefully through the Oversight Committee. There is a budgetary question associated with the possibility of moving beyond the scope of the current contract, and, and Madam City Manager, maybe you can outline the, the amount that we're talking about, if were we to proceed in this direction, as you suggested.
In addition to the numbers that are in the agenda report, which is the extension of the contract, if we were to have the cameras record upon removal of the firearm from the holster, it is a one-time cost of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. If we were to also install the modular that provides super very performance review tools, that is an annual cost, and for two hundred ninety-five cameras, the annual cost would be thirty-two thousand dollars. We do not have a recommendation of where that money would come from today. We would come back mid-year budget, which we expect will be before the council, your last meeting in January, possibly your first meeting in February, but very soon, and tell you the sources of that money then. There was a third item that had to do with the, the two minutes, and I'm going to turn to Deputy Chief Moody, if I might, because I, I fear I would not explain that well. It's a little complex, and, and if you would not, if you would please tell the council about that.
Chief Moody?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. As the interim city manager said, we do have an opportunity to do the two-minute pre-event buffering. As a matter of fact, we can look at that now. We can start that without having to wait to update to the Axon Three cameras, what we plan to do in the next two to three months, once we enter into this extended contract. I also have a couple of people here from Axon that can help explain that a little bit better if you need to know more about the two-minute pre-event buffering, but that is, we can actually initiate that sooner than later. Yeah.
Okay. Why, why don't we, we'll take the presentation down and just have them explain.
Sure.
The two-minute, the two-minute rule, I guess.
Sure. Jake, are you on? Jake Burrow, he's a sales and tech engineer with Axon.
Yes, I'm on.
Jake, can you talk a little bit about the two-minute pre-event buffering that we have, the capabilities of starting sooner than later?
Absolutely, yes. So the pre-event buffer is basically a period of time that the camera will commit video to memory when it is not in its actual active recording state. But when you do initiate a recording, that, that recording would contain that pre-event buffer's length of worth of footage in the video that gets uploaded into the digital evidence management system. So currently, the pre-event buffer is set to thirty seconds. You can extend that to two minutes so that every video that gets recorded will have the prior two minutes included in that video file.
Thank you, sir. And again, we'll hear more about the amendments and the potential changes to policy as, as this matter winds its way through the commission. But there, Mr. Hampton does have his hand up. Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to the representatives of Axon, as well as your city manager for the presentation and giving us information and also answering all the questions that I had prior very thoroughly, which doesn't actually lead to me. which doesn't actually lead to me asking any more questions, but more so about accountability and how, or we could do better. At the end of the day, it's, you know. And I think that if we could change the two, the two, 30 seconds to two minutes now, I, for one, support that. So I, I would go, if the chief can do that now, why not do it? Then as far as, far as the module goes, I don't see why we don't just purchase the module now and let the commission review the findings from the module. That's totally fine, but I think that, that'd be very helpful. And then as far as the, the holster, you know, the gun is withdrawn and pulling out the, the sensor there, we should purchase that as well. I mean, I think these, these are actually extremely minor cost in, in, as a relation to the, the big picture of things. And it also is, it's good policy, especially if we have these body-worn cameras. So I would actually like to make a motion, Mayor, to move with the module, as well as the sensor, when the gun is drawn, that the cameras automatically turn on. And then, as the, the chief has already mentioned that she could move the 30-second buffering to two minutes to move forward with that as well.
If I may.
So that would be my
I think your, your, your motion, Mr. Hampton, is consistent with the direction that we're headed in. I, I would like the city manager to address the procedural matter related issues.
Understanding the council's interest in this, that least of what we have heard from those that have spoke so far tonight. We'll see when there's an actual direction given to the council. We would need to look at the policy and update the policy on how the cameras are used, because obviously we are adding new equipment that the officers need to become familiar with. We also are looking to see what meet and confer we may need to have with the officers. I'm not sure that will apply. We really didn't have a chance to thoroughly review that. But I do not want to overstep a very important process or step in our process if that's necessary. But if we hear that you're interested, we will begin all of those steps, including coming back with a budget amendment. And I think the deputy chief, if I might, Mayor, wanted to add one.
The only thing, yes. The only thing I wanted to add is that we spoke with Axon today and we talked about signal sidearm and performance. And they, their recommendation was to look at it on a trial basis, which we can do now after we entered into the current contract. And that'll give us time to, for the Police Oversight Commission to take a look at it, to look at our policy, meet and confer. So I, I think that's a good way to go, to do the trial concept testing. But I'll let Sam DeBura from Axon talk about that a little bit. He and I spoke today on those matters. Sam, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Chief. Thanks for having us on today as well. Yes, we can do 30 to 90-day trials, both the single sidearm and performance as we enter into the new contract. This will preserve your current body-worn camera program, and then we can press forward with that. So there are additional questions in regards to performance and signal sidearm. A good trial and evaluation period could answer a lot of those questions as well.
Thank you. This matter is a negotiated matter, the matter of the, the cameras. And so I'd want us to follow the procedural rules here. And so I, I would ask Mr. Hampton that we direct the city manager to look at the issue of the meet and confer as we look at the policies. I understand the issue of a trial, but before we get to a trial point, we, we do need to run to ground all of the procedural issues that, and administrative issues that need to be looked at. And so I, I think that's the direction that I'm hearing the city manager suggest, and I support that, so that we continue to make progress on these issues.
Totally understand, thank you, sir.
Mayor, I made a motion
Thank you.
Earlier.
Mr. Hampton, are you okay with that, Mr. Hampton? It's consistent with your request, which I support.
So the, so what is the request at this point? Does it seem like, why not just add that into the motion that these things are going to happen?
Well.
In connection with the meet and confer.
Go, go ahead, Ms. Kurtz.
I, I believe what we hear is that you are approving the extension of the contract. But in addition, you are directing the city manager and the staff to go through the process that we need to, the steps, the meet and confer, and any policy changes, and then look at a trial demonstration while we are working through the Oversight Committee and bring their recommendations to the Public Safety Committee of the council. So that would be dual tracks of us doing our internal process and trial while we're, we're talking to the community and then back to the council, and ultimately here. If we can do that in time to have a mid-year budget adjustment to the end of January or February, that's a little aggressive, but we will shoot for that. If not, when we are ready, we will bring that budget amendment back to you, understanding that unless we find a fatal flaw that we are not aware of at this time, you would like to proceed with adding the additional modulars and the sidearm, signal sidearm to the contract that you are approving tonight.
Thank you.
Can I ask Axon representative, is the, the sidearm, are there departments in California or within Los Angeles County that are using this technology? And, and, I mean, sorry, I know that they are using this technology, but that have a buffering of two minutes as well as the, the signal sidearm, I guess that's what it's called?
Do other important departments employ that, Mr. Burrow?
I would have to check on the specifics of the two-minute buffer. I don't have that level of visibility into the configurations for each agency. But there are several agencies that do use some, some configuration of the pre-event buffer. It can go from 30 seconds to two minutes in 30-second increments. So there's some variability there. But we can try to look for some resources and references and get back to you.
Thank you.
And what about the camera turning on once the weapon is pulled? The sensor?
The signal sidearm units?
Yes, there you go, signal sidearm.
Yeah, we can get some references together if there are other specific agencies that you'd like to reach out to or
No, I was just wondering if you know about any, in Los Angeles County, does LAPD use this? I mean, what other departments use it? I'm just trying to figure out if this, if this is already being used somewhere else, then there may not be an issue in the, you know, with the meet and confer. It, it just sounds like a, a reason for me, and, and I'm speaking now to the council, it sounds as if it's a way for organization to say, oh, we can't do this because we found there's this issue with it, one issue. So I'm, I'm just trying to weigh out to see if there are other departments that are already using this, that have been using this, and if there are any problems that have been perceived from it.
Are you aware of other departments now? On the meet and confer, that would be specific to our bargaining unit. So that, the fact that other departments may or may not be using it would not necessarily impact the meet and confer process. Mr. Burrow, any other departments that use the technology that you're aware of that you can tell us now? Or would you like to reserve and come back to us?
I'd like to get back to you about agencies local to you that use that. I, I'm aware of agencies throughout the country that use it. But specific to LA County, I can try to get some reference accounts.
Okay.
And the performance, the, the performance module on trial basis doesn't require a meet and confer, does it, Chief? It's just information.
Yeah, it, it more than likely will, sir, because it's a change in their, in how they perform their duties. So we'll check with the city attorney, but it more than likely will require a meet and confer.
So to get information, call, requires a meet and confer?
Not necessarily.
Information, it's not a, it's not a addition. This is just extra information.
Right.
I'm trying to understand how
It, it, it actually probably would not. But as mentioned, we can look into it further, but probably not.
Want to get it right.
Well, then, well, we will go, I mean, so does that mean that we're going to move forward with the, I mean, we move forward with all these items that we just, that we just talked about?
Yes.
And, and this is going to come back to us in six months?
Less than, so we're hoping less than six months, Mr. Hampton. We're, yeah, we're hoping a month and a half by the end of January. So it's on a quick timeline.
Okay, and so then why don't we just bring this on, everything back at the end of January?
Yeah, the, the contract needs to be extended so we can continue with the current practice and the current technology. And as we look at these other issues and ancillary services to add to the contract, that will come back hopefully in six weeks, we could, a month and a half.
So we can't go month to month with this company? Is that what they're, is that what we're hearing? Because last time this came back to us, they said there was a, we get to go month to month until we are able to hash out everything?
Think we're in a better position to go with the contract as, as we look at the additional issues. And, and it would just be a contract amendment, Mr. Hampton. So the, the, the new contract would get us the technology that we need to get us to the point where we can employ the additional, the, the additional services. Yeah.
Okay, so the, the trial will not work without the new technology?
That's right.
Clear. Okay, well, I'll move approval with, it will come back to us in a month and a half.
Mr. Kennedy's moved it already. It's, and Mr. Kennedy moved it, so Mr. Hampton, you're, you're, you're second.
Are you fine with it coming back to us in a month and a half?
That's the goal.
Absolutely. And
Okay.
If it can come back sooner, that's great.
Thank you. Ms. Rivas?
Harvey, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say very briefly, I, I completely agree with moving forward with extending the contract and then looking into sidearm and performance. I especially am interested in, I'm sorry, it's not sidearm, signal sidearm. It just, it, it seems like it'd be a shame to upgrade to the new cameras that have this capability, but then not purchase the extra service to actually use it. So I'm really excited and hopeful that we'll be able to move quickly on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have a motion in a second, and I'll call the role. Thank you, Ms. Moody. Chief Moody?
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes. Next.
I was going to say, this is to approve the staff recommendation and directs the city manager to look at process, including procedural issues, and return to city council with any proposed budget and other adjustments.
That's correct. Thank you. Okay, so next, we move to a couple of second readings. The first is item 15, and this is amending Title I, Chapter 1.20 of the Pasadena Municipal Code. Districts, any, any poll of comment? Or? Or?
Not a 15. Okay, but I do have correspondence I'd like to
Okay.
The city clerk's office received, I'm sorry, one letter was received submitting a LA Times article and expressing opposition to Colorado Boulevard being the dividing line around which Pasadena City Council districts are divided. And four letters from one individual advocating for various communities of interest and speaking on language requirements for city elections. This correspondence was posted online, distributed to city council, and made part of the record.
Thank you. And this ordinance has been offered by Mr. Masuda. Roll call.
This is to adopt the ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Pasadena amending Title I, Chapter 1.20, election districts of the Pasadena Municipal Code. Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison? Councilmember Madison?
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted.
Next second reading is an interim urgency ordinance related to SB 9. This is, was introduced originally by Mr. Hampton. And there's one comment. Let's turn to the public speaker.
We have one public speaker, Anthony Menusos. You have one and a half minutes, please proceed. Sir, star six, to unmute?
Yeah, I'm with
There you go.
Thank you, officer. Do you all hear me?
Yes, please, please commence, thank you.
So, thank you so much for your attention in this matter. I'm just puzzled that the council considers this an emergency measure because my understanding is that means it negatively will affect the health and safety residents of our city. But no evidence has been offered to show that this SB 9 will have any deleterious effect on the health and safety of Pasadena's, particularly people of color and those living in poverty. And I, for this reason, I urge the council to prioritize policies that actually will have an impact on the health and safety of our citizens, namely affordable housing. A study by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation indicates that a lack of affordable housing is a real, is a real health and safety issue. And you've, you've heard from 150 residents of our city who are very concerned about this issue. And over 40 members of our city, residents of our city, have spoken out about this, and for really good reasons. The shortage of affordable housing limits families and individuals' choices about where they live, often relegating lower-income families to substandard housing in unsafe overcrowded neighborhoods with higher rates of poverty and fewer resources for health promotion. The lack of affordable housing, according to studies, affects families' ability to meet other essentials, expenses placing them under tremendous financial strain. High housing-related costs place a particular economic burden on low-income families, forcing trade-offs between food, heating, and other basic needs.
Sir, your time is, comes up.
So in any, in any case, this seems to me a real urgent emergency issue, not SB 9.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Constituent of that for, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a reporting on correspondence, Madam City Clerk.
The city clerk's office received one letter expressing support for Senate Bill 9, stating that they feel it will help lower the cost of housing, and urging the city not to try to thwart its implementation. And this correspondence has been distributed to city council, posted online, and made part of the record.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. The matter's been offered in the first instance by Mr. Hampton. Roll call on second reading.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, no, no, no. Not yet, I'm sorry. Let me read, allow me to read the ordinance first. And it reads, "An interim urgency ordinance of the City of Pasadena pertaining to construction of multiple dwellings on single hyphen family zone parcels pursuant to Senate Bill 9." And this is to adopt the ordinance. Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
And Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. I think that completes our agenda for the evening. For the first time in quite some time, we have no closed session. But we have more public comments. That's right. So we'll return to public comments on matters not on the agenda.
I'm going to go ahead and call Jasmine Richard Abdullah, Adriana Baptista, and Eddie Portillo. Jasmine, you have 1.5 minutes, please proceed. Star six, Jasmine? To unmute? Jasmine? Okay, we're going to go to the next piece, sir. I am Adriana Baptista. You have 1.5 minutes, followed by Eddie Portillo, followed by Daniel Quiros. Adriana is now gone, so we're going, and Eddie has not checked in, so we're going to go with Daniel Quiros, followed by Jose Rivera. Daniel, you have 1.5 minutes, please commence. Daniel, star six, to unmute?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, sir. Yeah, we can hear you, sir. Please proceed. One point five minutes.
Hi, how you doing? Uh, thank you. My name is Daniel Quiros. I work for, uh, the City of Pasadena and the sanitation department. And I just want to let you guys know that we've been nonstop since the whole pandemic got started, and, uh, we're in the middle of negotiations right now. And it's a little frustrating that the city is not, uh, they claim they love us, they claim so much that we're doing great, and I know in Taiwan is a problem because they won't give the service that we do, but they don't show it when it comes up to the negotiations. They're offering a very, very low amount of money, percentage-wise, speaking that we don't have in, um, there's no general fund money, but we get paid through the refugee collection fund, which I don't understand how those, how that will make sense. So I just wish, uh, the city would show us a little bit of support, and maybe you guys could help us out with that, our new MOU, since we're in the middle of negotiations.
Sir, you have thirty seconds?
That's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you.
I just, uh, hope that this message reaches somebody important at the top.
Thank you, Mr. Quiros.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the next speaker, I'd just like to wish Vice Mayor Wilson a happy birthday today. Today's his twenty-first.
Thank you all. I, I can't think of a better way to spend my birthday than with my colleagues and the public of Pasadena. So, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Our next speaker is Jose Munoz, followed by Kyle Johnson, followed by Gary Peters. Jose, you have one point five minutes. Please proceed. You put star six to unmute. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. I spoke last week. My name is Jose Munoz. I am also a city worker for the sanitation department. As Mr. Quiros said, um, we're in negotiations right now, and one of the things that it's, um, uh, very, uh, what we're bothered by, or, is that we've been working so hard through the pandemic. As you guys know, uh, most of City Hall was closed while, while the pandemic was happening, and our department didn't ever close. We, we kept working. Um, our workload was heavier, more people were at home, there was more trash, there was more recycled, there was more yard waste, and I think that overall, um, just the, the lack of respect that we get as, um, as sanitation drivers for the city, uh, yes, uh,
Sir, you have thirty seconds?
We're proud, we're, we're, we are proud to work for the city, but we just, uh, don't feel that, uh, that the city respects us as employees there. Um, we could say that we feel like the stepchild of the city. Um, I'm hoping that, uh, you guys could really, really pay attention to our negotiations, and it, we're asking for something that we've earned. Not that we are just trying to get. I, I believe that we've earned it by all the hard work that in the, that we've done in the past.
Sir, your time is up.
We're just hoping that you guys open your eyes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Kyle Johnson has not checked in, nor has Gary Peters, so we will proceed to Symbol Wright, followed by Dwayne Howard, followed by Doral Walker. Symbol Wright, you have one point five minutes. Please press, uh, press star six to unmute, and you can begin now. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Uh, my name is Symbol Wright, and, uh, I'm the Vice President of Service Employees International Union Local 721. And I'd like to thank, uh, the mayor and council for hearing us tonight. Our members, um, in the sanitation department, refuge, um, have worked nonstop during this pandemic. They, a pandemic or no pandemic, they're out there to protect public health and the environment. They serve the city with pride. They continue, uh, to make sure that, that every one of you look good when it comes to, uh, time to get elected. So we're asking you to step up to the plate as public officials, recognizing the hard work and dedication of the sanitation employees, uh, that, when, when it comes to this, uh, MOU and, and, and negotiations.
Sir, you have thirty seconds?
Pride. Also, uh, just remember, this, they're, they don't get paid out of the general fund. They get paid out of the refuge collection fund. I ask you and urge you to support our sanitation workers. Um, SCIU members are proud to serve the City of Pasadena. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dwayne Howard, followed by Doral Walker, followed by Karina K. Dwayne, you have one point five minutes. Please press star six to unmute, and you can commence now. Thank you.
Um, good evening to the council. I am motivated in my comment by a tragic, a tragic accident happened on San Pasquale and Allen a couple of weeks ago of a runner that was hit by a vehicle at a stop, at a stop sign. I'm a runner as well, and cyclist in the Pasadena community, and, um, there are some incidents that I am concerned about. Twice this month, I have al- almost been hit by a car turning left onto a major road, so, on, from Los Robles onto Del Mar, and also from Los Robles onto Green Street. Now, I know in many cities, uh, the traffic lights have an interim period where all signals are, are red, or there's a protected, some amount of time for a protected, um, crossing for, for pedestrians. I noticed many streets in Pasadena, as soon as the, uh, lights.
Sir, you have thirty seconds?
There's also, there's no time protected for pedestrians across the road. So I would, I ask the council to consider implementing some, uh, street, uh, traffic, better traffic, uh, crossing features in the traffic light. Also, the lighting in Pasadena is very dim, and if you are out walking or running at night, it can, this can increase the danger. So I'm asking the council to consider improved street lighting, especially in high-traffic areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Doral Walker, is not checked in, so we'll move on to Karina K, followed by Sarah Bolin, followed by Yoel Carter. Karina, you have one point five minutes. Please proceed.
Hi, thank you. My name's Karina. I'm a Pasadena resident and a member of Black Lives Matter Los Angeles. If you haven't noticed, police departments across the country are corrupt. Police departments across the country are festering boils of hate. Police departments across the country have officers who exhibit racial biases, discrimination, and sheer violence, racial violence towards the people that they're supposed to protect and serve. The Pasadena Police Department is no different. If you haven't, we're not demanding, we're not demanding, you know, an extension of body worn cameras, we're not demanding, uh, you know, what we're demanding is that the city treats black people like their lives matter. Why we say the officers that killed Anthony McLean need to be fired, Edwin Zimoglinen and Ronald Durano, why we say they need to be fired, is because when black men die in the City of Pasadena, we don't need contracts and extensions and everything, but they're firing. Firing them would show that that action is unacceptable.
Thirty seconds, please.
If one of you city council members that treats that behavior as acceptable sends the same message across the country that police officers can do whatever the hell they want to do. You all are complicit in the state of our country, in the state of police departments that continue to murder black people. Pasadena is not a safe place. It is not a beautiful place. You are only as strong as your weakest link, and that is your racist department and the cover-up.
Your time is up.
The labeling that you do.
Thank you, Karina. Appreciate your comments.
You should all be ashamed.
The next speaker was.
Black Lives Matter.
Ma'am, ma'am, we have to be respectful for the other people's time. Thank you. The next speaker, Sarah Bolin, followed by Yoel Carter, followed by Ben Vargas. Sarah, you have one point five minutes. Please proceed. Sarah?
I'm here. In July, the U.N. announced that it will investigate human rights abuses against black people, specifically systemic racism in policing and lack of accountability for police killings. Pasadena, what are you waiting for? This city council must hold its police department accountable. What is the holdup? Every officer involved in the murder of Anthony McLean must be fired. It is very frustrating to listen to a debate over two minutes of buffered footage when you have footage now that you are not acknowledging, and you're not using it for disciplinary action against the officers who killed Anthony McLean. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yoel Carter, who has not checked in, Ben Vargas, followed by Troy, followed by Brittany Pollock. Ben, you have one point five minutes. Please proceed.
Good evening, city council members and Mayor Gordo. My name is Ben Vargas. I am a Pasadena resident in District One. Based on recent comments by a certain elected official in Pasadena, there is a perception that listening to the demands of the people is no longer the responsibility of the mayor or the city council. Shame on you. As elected, elected officials, this is part of your job. As mentioned many times tonight, our demands are simple: an amendment to the city charter to allow the city council to fire the officers involved in the murder of Anthony McLean. We are not interested in hearing excuses why this cannot be done. We demand you agendize the Anthony McLean case. We demand the implementation of mandatory disciplinary action for police misconduct. Lastly, we demand transparent officer-involved shootings with evidence released to the public within twenty-four hours until the investigation is complete. If you will not listen to our demands, be prepared to be voted out by the same people whose demands you ignore.
Sir, thirty seconds. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You have thirty seconds, sir.
I'm good. I said what I needed to. Thanks.
Great, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next speaker is Eddie Portillo, uh, followed by Sarah, no, followed by Troy, followed by Brittany Pollock. Eddie, you have one point five minutes. Please proceed. And that, please press star six to unmute. Eddie, I can see you're connected. We just need you to press star six, um, to unmute. Okay, Eddie, we're gonna have to move on. Troy has not checked in. Brittany Pollock has not checked in, so we're going to Sarah, followed by Carolyn Galoney. Sarah, you have one point five minutes. Your time starts now. Thank you very much.
Hello, good evening. Uh, my name is Sarah, born and raised in Pasadena. I'm just calling in to, uh, demand that you guys agendize whether or not it's okay to murder an innocent black man, Anthony McLean. Uh, over the weekend, this white man shot up activist at the Hollywood Star, Vicente Fernandez, and he was arrested without being murdered. So we know it's possible. It just seems to only happen to black and brown men. They're murdered. Anthony McLean didn't commit a crime. Um, his belt buckle was mistaken for a gun, so probably we also shouldn't have dumbass policemen who kill men for no reason. Um, train these policemen, stop killing people for no fucking reason. Um, we're not gonna just vote you guys out. I have nothing better to do. We will show up outside your house if you're not gonna listen to us. We did that to Steve Marmell. We got him to retire. We're not afraid to show up outside your house. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Carolyn Galoney. Carolyn, you have one point five minutes. Please proceed.
Hi, guys. I'm calling again, um, just to thank you about the, uh, demand, demanding that you fire the officers involved in the murder of Anthony McLean. Please show up for your community, for the people of, 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 really, the whole world. Show up, do something. Your inaction is speaking for you. Don't make excuses, because excuses are just that. I tell my children that all the time. What you do, what you show up for, that's what you care about, and that's how you make a change, and that's how you, we know what you want, and know what you do, and you can make a change. You have the ability to agendize this, to fire these officers. You have the ability to, to have mandatory disciplinary action. You have the ability to, the next time the police unions wants a contract, to have influence over the city manager on what that looks like.
Carolyn, you have thirty seconds?
I'm petrified. I saw today everyone getting ready, all the, uh, for, for the rose parade, and I know people sleep out, and I am petrified because I have seen how our tree, police, treat and murder men, black men, and men of color, and really treat all of our citizens of color. It's such inequality, and I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm scared.
Carolyn, your time is up. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you.
Matters not on the agenda.
And that completes public comment as well as our agenda. I'd like to just, um, thank, uh, the staff, uh, for their work over the last year, uh, and wish all of you, all of my colleagues and all residents of Pasadena, a happy holiday season, certainly a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. I look forward to seeing all of you during the holiday season, but particularly on New Year's Day, um, when Pasadena will celebrate, uh, the incoming year. Uh, I hope you all stay safe and, uh, receive all that you wish for, and careful what you wish for.
Mayor?
Mr. Hampton?
If I may, um, absolutely, uh, Merry Christmas and happy holidays to all Pasadena residents, as well as all of our great city staff that works tirelessly every day, um, and to all of those people that call in, um, whether, whatever the issue is, I, over the, the past year, I'm grateful for every, each, each and every one of, um, our public speakers, and I, I look forward to, you know, working, uh, with them in the community in, in the near future here going into the new year. I, I do wanna just ask a question about, or, uh, maybe not even a question, but I, the sanitation workers have called, you know, called in a few times now, and I, I want them to know that I personally, as one, I love and appreciate and, uh, respect the job that they do. They are the backbone of our city. They, they work tirelessly every year to make sure that all of our trash and, and bulky items and other items are picked up, and I, um, hope during the negotiations, our, um, city negotiators are treating them, um, fairly. Um, and then to the public commentators that talk about police accountability, I think it's important, um, that we don't, um, forget about that. Just because we paid a settlement doesn't mean that, uh, police accountability is not something that needs to happen, or these items don't need to be agendized. So Mayor, in the new year, I look forward to having that discussion about, um, um, the personnel, um, policies as it relates to, um, waiting for the DA, as well as body worn camera, um, footage, uh, being, uh, fully released, um, and in a timely fashion. So, um, I thank all of my colleagues over the past year, very grateful for each and every one of you, and, um, look forward to seeing y'all in the new year. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to share with my colleagues, Mayor, and colleagues, on Wednesday, December eighth, Pasadena Studios broke ground at two, two eighty North Oakland Avenue. And you may recall that that is a complex that will have one hundred and eighty all affordable units in District Three. The complex meets all Pasadena protocols by right, no variances, no state mandates, no City of Pasadena subsidies were required. The plan check was approved in a record-breaking three months. Uh, the housing project was awarded federal tax credits and tax-exempt bonds to make the unit affordable for our most deserving residents. These units will be affordable into perpetuity, and I'd like to thank the Development Group, Community Builders Group, Joseph Sager, co-developer Christian Hart, co-developer Bridge Financial Advisors, James A. Osterling, who's a co-developer, Hunter S. Simmons, a co-developer. Many of you recall that I requested that we build one thousand units in one thousand days of affordable housing. We are on track to exceed that, and in the coming year, in January, I hope to come up with a three thousand, uh, unit figure over a period of time that I'll have to research first to make sure it's doable. I want to thank all of the members of the city council, and particularly, um, Vice Mayor Wilson and the representative of the mayor, Vanya Delacubas, who represented the mayor well, and all of the community that came out to show support for the one hundred and eighty all-affordable units that are being built at two eighty North Oakland Avenue. Also, if, Mayor, if you have the information related to Iran, wait, I ask that you, on behalf of the whole council, share that information and also the funeral tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Now with that, that completes our agenda, and I'd again like to thank the public for their participation, and each of you as individual council members for your hard work on behalf of the residents of Pasadena, and thank you again to the staff. With that, we will stand adjourned.